Good evening. With this meeting on the School Board of Independent School District 279, please come to order is the 19th of January 2016 and the time is 6:05 PM. Seated in front of you this evening, from my left to your right, is Director Bob Gerhardt, Director Dean Henke, Director Jim Burgett, Director Jackie Gertz, and Superintendent of Schools Dr. Kate McGuire. Would everybody please stand for the pledge?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, in front of you is the agenda. Are there any additions to the agenda? Hearing none, I would move to accept the agenda as printed. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, and by Director Gerhardt. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries to accept the agenda as printed. Our next agenda item is the audience opportunity to address the school board. We do have one speaker this night, this evening, and I am not sure if you have spoken before, and so I'll just cover some of our, the audience opportunity guidelines at a high level. We'll ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. We'll provide a 30-second notice before your time is up. Any longer time may be granted at discretion of the board chair. The board and administration will listen to comments and ask clarifying questions if needed, and if there are any questions that we are unable to answer tonight, the superintendent will designate somebody to follow up. We ask that speakers not address criticism toward any individual district employee. Such concerns should be directed privately to the employee supervisor or higher-level administrator. And with that, our first and only speaker is Marshall Thompson. Welcome.
Marshall Thompson, I'm a math teacher, and I'm currently serving in the role of instructional coach at Osseo Senior High and Maple Grove Senior High, and I'm also the lead negotiator for Education Minnesota Osseo. The reason I'm speaking tonight is, well, later on, you're going to vote on a new contract for the teachers, and I wanted to thank everyone who was involved in that process. In particular, Jackie Gertz, and Jessica's not here, but Jessica Craig, we're truly lucky to have your leadership in our district. Back in November, I came up here, and I told you how thankful I was for the collaborative culture we have in our district, and that was a direct reference to the negotiations process. Although we often and frequently, and as we should, respectfully disagree on issues, we always put our heads together to try to figure out how to best meet the needs of our kids. We honored each other's opinions throughout the process. We brainstormed together to solve problems. We shared frustrations, and although we never, I'm sure you didn't get everything you want, I'm sure we, I know we didn't get everything we want, even though that didn't happen, I really think we came out with an agreement that we can be proud of. So again, thank you, Jackie, and I'll thank Jessica when I see her next, for your continued leadership and your willingness to engage in the process.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. And our next agenda item is the superintendent's report. Dr. McGuire.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A regular part of the superintendent's report is to share points of pride. Points of pride celebrate students, staff, and community members who are contributing to the accomplishment of our mission, which is to inspire and prepare all students with the confidence, courage, and competence to achieve their dreams, contribute to community, and engage in a lifetime of learning. And I've asked cabinet members to share those points of pride tonight.
Under the category of achieving dreams, six seniors from our three comprehensive high schools have been named this year's AAA award nominees. AAA award winners are students who are recognized for excellence in academics, athletics, and the arts. Nominees include Molly Caven and Evan Ditter from Maple Grove Senior High, Megan Cornia and John Wen from Osseo Senior High, and Grant Engeman and Heather McMurdo from Park Center Senior High. Additionally, Park Center's Heather McMurdo, a straight A IB student, national merit semifinalist and musician, was recently featured as a Channel 12 News standout student. She's also a three-sport athlete on the National Honor Society and has participated in four mission trips. McMurdo is considering a college degree in chemical engineering. Fernbrook 5th grader Ari Man Aman recently won the 5th and 6th grade division of the Fermi Off-the-Wall Math League Global Competition. Individuals and teams competed for six weeks answering math questions using estimation, rounding numbers, guessing, and integrating writing about math.
Elm Creek 5th grader Samantha Longenecker achieved a perfect score of 20 in the difficult Blue Division of a recent World Masters Challenge. The challenge is a national vocabulary competition challenging students to become familiar with new words and use them in analogies. A semifinalist in the Dream It, Do It Metro Minnesota Vex Robotics Tournament held last month, two Osseo Senior High Vex Robotics Teams will advance to the state tournament in St. Cloud, where they will compete for invitations to the world championship competition. Osseo Robots and Project competed against 48 teams at the regional tournament. Cameron Bailey, a 7th grade student at Osseo Middle School, won first place at the local level of the annual Patriot Pen Writing Contest sponsored by the Veterans of Foreign Wars. Cameron's essay responded to the theme, "What Freedom Means to Me." She has now entered into the state competition with the chance to win a trip to Washington, DC. Park Center grad Olivia McCoo was recently featured in People's magazines for her perseverance as an athlete while enduring 120 brain surgeries throughout the first 20 years of her life. Olivia is currently a Dean's List student at Augsburg College studying towards a communications degree.
In the category of contributing to community, students at our three comprehensive high schools were living examples of our mission as they contributed to community over the holiday season. Several Park Center students volunteered at Toys for Tots by helping unload, sort, and distribute gifts. Osseo seniors' opportunities in emergency care students raised over $700 to purchase blankets, pillows, hats, mittens, winter jackets, boots, and toys for families at Zane Wood Community School. The students coordinated all efforts from fundraising to shop, from fundraising to shopping for the purchases, to wrapping and delivering the gifts. And Maple Grove Senior High student Jake Sexton donated gift money he had received over the holidays to the Casa de Dios Foundation in Columbia, an organization he visited on a school trip last year. Jake's donation will help build additional rooms. AP Spanish students Skyped with staff at Casa de Dios so that students who hadn't visited Columbia could see what the foundation looks like and learn more about what they do to help people in their community. After their experience attending We Day, which is a day-long celebration of contributing to community, where hundreds of students from all over the state gathered last fall, Edinburgh Student Council members participated in Scare Out Hungry. Students collected food while trick-or-treating and hosted a food drive at school. They donated more than 1,200 food items to seek, which helps local families in need.
Students at two of our elementary schools participated in projects to provide blankets for patients at local hospitals. Oakview Student Council members learned the joy of doing something kind for others by assembling fleece tie blankets and making get well cards for patients at Maple Grove Hospital. Students at Woodland Elementary participated in a pillow and blanket-making project with help from District 279 Foundation, Gillette Children's Hospital, and several volunteers. In addition to contributing to the community, the project offers older students a leadership opportunity as they work with their younger buddy rooms. The Maple Grove ambassadors visited Cedar Island 1st graders to read Brontorina, a story about a dinosaur determined to dance even when the odds are stacked against her. Two of the ambassadors have ties to the Maple Grove Senior High. Lauren Krasnoff is a senior, and Alex Du Cosin is a recent graduate. In our category of lifelong learning, Park Center freshman Kimberly Zaze, who is front and center in this photo, participated on a planning team for the city of Brooklyn Park recently. The team reviewed the work that has occurred over the past five years and provided input into the components of a broader community plan to be developed for the city of Brooklyn Park. Superintendent McGuire also participated in the planning event.
More than 30 Osseo-area school students were honored at the STAR Student Awards, presented by the Business Education Partnership Committee of North Hennepin Area Chamber of Commerce. These students were recognized for their outstanding achievements in career advancement, employment, or volunteerism. Palmer Lake's Asian New Year Celebration included performances by more than 30 students to an audience of nearly 240 friends and family members. The evening offered an opportunity to enjoy student entertainment while learning about Mung culture. Crestview hosted its annual Culture Day, a celebration that included classroom activities, a multicultural lunch, a parade of cultures, and student performances. The media center was also transformed into a cultural museum, displaying artifacts from the Northwest Suburban Integration District and staff members and student artwork. Before winter break, Senator Chris Eaton, employees from Luther Toyota, and other volunteers visited Garden City to read with students and construct gingerbread houses. Garden City students kept up their reading skills over winter break by keeping track of reading minutes and recording book titles on paper mittens that currently decorate school hallways. Collectively, students logged more than 600 minutes of reading over break.
As part of the Latino Circle at Park Center Senior High, students worked with equity specialist Jesus Ramirez to discuss cultural identity and symbols that represent different Latino communities. Based on those discussions, the group created a mural that hangs in Park Center with plans for it to travel to other schools in the district for temporary display. As part of this project, students also developed leadership and speaking skills as they shared their knowledge with teachers to encourage greater integration of Latino culture into the curriculum. In the category of mission-driven employees, Assistant Superintendent Aston Osi and Equity Teacher Courtney Caldwell gave a presentation at the 2015 AMSD Policy Conference in December. The theme of this year's conference was about promising practices to close the achievement gap and building partnerships to reach all students. The Osseo team collaborated on a presentation entitled, "But We've Always Done It This Way: How Good Intentions Perpetuate Racial Disparities in Our Schools." Woodland teacher Amy Goodrich was featured in a video produced by the Minnesota Partnership for Collaborative Curriculum to celebrate its Local Government Innovation Award from Humphrey School of Public Affairs. Several of our teachers have participated in writing curriculum, and many use the digital curriculum in their classrooms.
Thank you. Board members, you might recognize Amy Goodrich, our famous teacher in the audience tonight because she's going to participate as part of the digital learning presentation as well. So double bang for the buck here tonight. We're going to get a little bit of information about that collaborative curriculum development as well. Board members, I have just two other things in my, the rest of my superintendent's report. I'd like to introduce you to a guest that I've invited in the audience tonight, Margot Clavon. Margot, I'm wondering if you would just stand for a minute. Board members, I am delighted to share that we have yet another Osseo Leadership Team member who has recently been recognized at the state level. Margot Clavon, Assistant Principal at Palmer Lake Elementary School in Brooklyn Park, is a member of the Minnesota Elementary School Principals Association, or MASP, and she is Minnesota's 2016 National Outstanding Assistant Principal. MASP and the National Association of Elementary School Principals present this prestigious award. Margot began her career as a teacher in Osseo area schools. Who hired you, Margot? Was that me? It may have been. I don't recall. Margot served as a teacher leader for our QCOM program before stepping into the administrative ranks as well. The National Outstanding Assistant Principal Program honors assistant principals who are doing a superb job in their roles. This program promotes educational excellence and calls attention to the fundamental importance of the assistant principal role. Billy Chan, who is the principal at Palmer Lake Elementary School, summed up Margot Clavon best when he said, "Margot exemplifies quality leadership. She inspires others for the greater good, develops meaningful relationships, works collaboratively, is a reflective practitioner, a problem solver, and provides a clear sense of purpose in her work. It is when you couple this with a caring heart and her infectious sense of humor that you realize you may just have the National Outstanding Assistant Principal of the Year." So we'll look forward to that. Margot, congratulations. Thanks for being here. Lastly, board members, the District 279 Foundation is hosting its annual fundraising event called a Night Out on Friday, February 12th. This year, the event will be held at the Northwest Marriott, and the theme will be "School Spirit." I want to invite members of our community and our staff members to participate in the event, which will begin with a silent auction followed by a fabulous dinner. The event usually begins, or the event will begin, at 5:30 PM and typically concludes at about 9:30 PM. The Night Out event is the biggest fundraiser of the year for the District 279 Foundation, which supports classroom grants and other projects that go directly to our schools. Tickets can still be purchased online at district279foundation.org. Thank you.
Thank you for those reports. Our next agenda item is school board reports, and our first one is TIES. Director Burgett.
Thank you, Chair Henke. TIES is an education technology collaborative of 48 Minnesota school districts. In the case of Osseo schools, for example, TIES provides the cloud-based school view and fee-pay systems, as well as high-speed internet to all of our schools. I'm on the TIES Executive Committee, and we function in many ways similar to a school board. Our members are actually owners of the TIES collaborative, and we serve them as our customers. The current annual goals for TIES and our new director, Mark Wallack, are as follows: To improve financial health, improve focus on customer needs and satisfaction, complete the internal business plan, complete the detailed organization review, and complete a long-range facilities plan. The current major focus of TIES is to replace the aging TCIS, Student Information System, with a partners project or product called Synergy. This will provide a rapid leap forward in function and usability. Several member districts have already transitioned to Synergy, and Osseo is scheduled to move, I believe, beginning this summer. The TIES Executive Committee meetings are open to the public and are held at the TIES Building on the intersection of Snelling and Larpinter and St. Paul. Their next meeting is tomorrow morning at 7:00 AM. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next board report is Grade Configuration Steering Committee. Director Gertz.
Thank you. The grade span steering committee met on January 12th, 2016. Currently, there are 31 members on the steering committee, and I am the school board member serving on that committee. The steering committee has met 22 times since June of 2014 and will continue to meet into the spring. At the school board work session on December 15th, board members learned that the logistics project team was closed out and that three additional teams would be closing out in December and January. The steering committee heard the final reports from human resources, high school facilities, and technology at the meeting. High school programming, out-of-school-time programming, and middle school design are continuing, and each project team leader provided a status update. The high school programming team discussed new information about potential opportunities for partnerships with North Hennepin Community College, confirmed electives for students in grades 9 through 12 in preparation for student registration, and plans for providing 9th grade credit recovery during second trimester. The out-of-school-time programming team reported that they were reviewing data and scheduling January meetings with elementary and middle school leaders and staff to share what they've learned from the data about future and current programs. The team reported that the new program started this year exceeded enrollment expectations. The middle school design team has completed the work on the middle school elective progression. The proposed progression was shared with the school board in December and accepted by cabinet. The guide to middle school is being updated and expanded to include registration information. The next meeting scheduled for January, is scheduled for January 25th, will focus on implementation of the cluster model. Team members will have an opportunity to discuss implementation and identify the next steps. And as a school board member, participating on this committee was an absolute awe experience to really understand the decision that we made for changing grade span and the absolute complexity of it and the enormity of it. You just sat there with your chin on the floor, you know, not really understanding all of the implications, you know, even down to changing, you know, grade, grade, little, the grade sheets that you get for your kids, you know, just that have to change the names to middle school, just all these things you did not, you just didn't even think of. And our, to see all the organized effort from everyone who did it. Kim did a phenomenal job leading that team, and every single person in the district as an employee, I think, was touched and helped in this process. And I just, as a board member, appreciate everyone's efforts because it was really hard, really big, and we really appreciate everyone's effort in making this change. So I have really enjoyed being on the committee, and so I just want to tell everyone, thank you for all your incredibly phenomenal hard work during this time.
Thank you. And our next school board report is a January 5th, 2016 work session. Director Gerhardt.
Thank you, Chairman Henke. The school board discussed three topics at its Tuesday, January 5 work session. During the first portion of the work session, the school board reviewed the proposed 2016 legislative platform and provided feedback on its contents. Each year, the school board develops a legislative platform to provide clarity about its key legislative interests and to use as a communication tool with members of the school district legislative delegation. Valerie Dozlin of Ewald Consulting also provided a short recap of the 2015 legislative session and a brief 2016 pre-session update. The school board will take formal action on the legislative platform at its regular school board meeting on January 19th. Next, the school board learned about the district's process to update the required 10-year deferred maintenance plan. The board learned about the work of staff and ICS Consulting, who completed Phase 1 of this process by conducting an initial building assessment of each site. This preliminary work has identified approximately $236 million in deferred maintenance projects over the next 10 years. ICS is being recommended to assist the district in completing Phase 2 of this comprehensive and strategic project and funding plan. The board provided direction regarding next steps that will culminate in a revised 10-year deferred maintenance plan in the summer of 2016. The final portion of the work session was utilized to discuss potential federal magnet-grant opportunities in collaboration with Northwest Suburban Integration District. All school board sessions are open to the public and are also audiotaped, and members of the public can access audio recordings of our work sessions on our district website. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other school board reports? Hearing none, we'll move to our next agenda item, which is a presentation, Priority Results Update, Digital Learning. Tim Wilson, welcome, Tim.
Chair Henke, members of the school board, Superintendent McGuire, my job is easy tonight. I'm here to introduce Andy Bado. Andy's right here behind me. She's very quick. Andy is, works closely with me in leading our digital learning work. She is the coordinator of digital learning and instructional media, and she's here to talk to you a little tonight about the way that we're using our technology in our elementary school grades around some digital curriculum. So looking forward to hear from her. Andy?
Chair Henke, school board members, Superintendent McGuire, thank you so much for having me here tonight. I'm really honored to be able to talk to you and update you about what's happening with digital learning. So before we start in talking about that update, I just want to bring us back to how does this fit with our mission? And really, digital learning is using technology to enhance and to personalize student learning in order to close the achievement gap so that we can have equitable student achievement. This year's priority work was around three areas: expanding student access to mobile devices, increasing the use of online curriculum, and enhancing personalized and flexible learning opportunities for our students. Another way to look at those three buckets is to look at the mobile devices. So we were able to expand iPads to grades 5 through 12. The year before, we had, had mobile devices with our early adopter group. Now we have that with all 5th through 12th grade students. Digital curriculum, we have adopted tools such as Google Apps for Education and Schoology so that our students and our teachers have access to digital tools, content, so that they can create a digital classroom. And then personalizing learning, how we can start giving students opportunities to have choice and to learn in different ways. Today, I'm going to update you on two areas, what were happening in our elementary classrooms. So Grade 3 Social Studies, how they are using some of the MPCC content that was Superintendent McGuire talked about earlier, and then how our 5th grade, one of our 5th grade teams is using iPads to personalize learning in the subject of art. So to start with, looking at digital curriculum. So again, we are partnering with the partnership, Minnesota Partnership for Collaborative Curriculum, otherwise known as MPCC. There are over 200 Minnesota districts that are currently involved in this project, and the goal is to create digital courses in grades 3 through 12 in the four content or core areas, so science, mathematics, language arts, and social studies. All the courses are standards-driven, standards-aligned, and they're created collaboratively. So for example, in Osseo, we had two projects that we took part in, and we had teacher writers who are actually writing the curriculum for this project. Here's that video that we talked about, and I'm not going to show the entire thing, but I do want to show about two and a half minutes of this, and it will give you more information about the MPCC, and also it will highlight one of our teachers who I will ask, ask to come up after this.
The Minnesota Partnership for Collaborative Curriculum, or MPCC, is a grassroots effort by Minnesota school districts to create digital curriculum that meets our standards and that we own, have control over, can edit, change, and adapt to our local needs so that every district can use the materials as they see fit in their local context to meet the needs of their teachers and their students in their community. Currently, we have about 30 courses that are in various stages of pilot or completion, and about 10 more that we plan to do yet this year to reach our goal of 40 courses in grades 3 through 12 for math, science, language arts, and social studies.
In starting to use the MPCC materials, I loved having a core structure, a framework that I could teach from that was consistent. The students were able to access the information from home, the parents were able to access the same information. If students needed reteaching or review, they could watch the videos over and over, they could review the lesson on their own. I can implement anything I want, I can add things to the platform and supplement or extend activities, but I know what language is there, and it's consistent, so when they go back to review, it's all the same again.
The MPCC materials contain all of the materials that a teacher would need to meet all the state standards in a particular course. Because it's in a digital format, teachers can look through and decide which parts they really need, which parts they want to highlight, what order they want to do it in. They're intended to work on any platform or any device, either on a laptop or iPad initiative so that students can access and use the materials. They can also just be shown by the teacher and then have the students work on their own, and that really allows the teacher to customize to what they have in place.
Will you put a thumb up if you have that? This morning, I was actually just talking to my class about how they felt about, you know, their last year in 2nd grade experience of using their social studies textbook versus now this year using the digital curriculum. And not one student raised their hand saying they liked the textbook better. They said that they enjoyed using the Chromebooks. They talked about being able to utilize different information. Students can have it read to them, I can assign it as something to listen to independently. There's a lot of student collaboration, so they're working together. It pushes me to give them more opportunities to show their work in different ways. They're learning at a really young age that they can have choice, and they can show their learning in multiple ways.
The way the MPCC financial model has worked...
I'll stop right there, and again, I just wanted to point out that we have Grade 3 who's using social studies, Grade 5 who's using the social studies, and Grade 7 who's using the science curriculum from MPCC. So at this time, I want to bring up Amy Goodrich, 3rd grade teacher from Woodland Elementary, just to talk about how she's using that curriculum and how she sees it working in her classroom.
Hello, it's such an honor to be here tonight to share the great work that our 3rd graders across the district are doing. Backing up with how we got started with MPCC, our 3rd grade state standards changed, and so our textbooks did, were not useful for us. We didn't have a curriculum that we could use that would meet the needs of those new standards. Because they were 6th grade standards, the ancient civilization standards were moved down to 3rd grade, everything out there was far too difficult. And as we have found before, our district writing teams can get together and create wonderful things, but I had no idea when I began this writing team, how amazing the work that comes out of that team is. There are teachers specifically for the 3rd grade social studies, there were teachers from ASIO, but there were also teachers from all over the state. We were lucky enough to have facilitators, two facilitators, were actually here from ASIO, Tammy Provert and Sarah Lubey Morris, so that tells you, of course, that what would come out of that project would be pretty amazing. So I just wanted to highlight what comes out of that project is really high, high-quality and so much better than we could have done on our own, just 3rd grade teachers getting together. The content that is there is really pretty extraordinary. The other piece that was highlighted in the video was just how transformational this is for 3rd graders. I had no idea, you know, taking out this content last year as a pilot teacher, really just using my teacher computer and projector and projecting the content and doing a lot of it paper, pencil, how far I have come and how far my students have come now in the second year. You know, towards the end of last year, we were able to get some more devices and students were utilizing some of the activities on their own. This year has been a huge shift for me and transformational in my instruction and what I am exposing my little 3rd graders to. You know, they are in School Ag and submitting assignments. We threw this, I'm not quite sure how it happened, but we, because 3rd grade has this curriculum that's online, we were able to get additional devices. So my classroom has 14 iPads, so students are able to access them all day, not just for social studies. Well, that's a huge shift for me. I have to think of how do I utilize these amazing devices? And students are learning at a really young age that I'm exposing them to those different ways that they can show what they know. Instead of a huge, long writing project for a how-to or procedural text, students created a video. Pretty cool and super engaging. Students are walking around the building, taking pictures of parallel and perpendicular lines, and then submitting that to me rather than taking a paper pencil test. So they're learning and being exposed to these different ways that I never dreamed of when I started this project just two summers ago. So that in itself has been pretty transformational. I see my 3rd graders doing things that my own 6th grader, who goes to ASIO Middle School, is learning how to do, submit assignments using notability through School Ag. So I think through this, an unintended consequence or a wonderful thing is that our 3rd graders across the system, not just my own, 3rd graders are being exposed to things that will only help them be that much more successful as their years go on here in the system. So thank you.
Again, a big thank you to Amy for coming tonight. Another update that I want to give you is how we're starting to personalize learning as well, which Amy, I brought her here to talk about MPC and the digital curriculum, but you could already hear her talking about how some of these areas sort of meld and come together. So while she was talking about digital curriculum, she was also talking about the opportunities that she is giving her students to personalize or give choice to kids in their learning. So personalized learning, we think of that giving students options or opportunities in a couple different ways. We think about how we can use time differently. So having access to a device where students can, on their own time, when it makes sense for them, when they're not on a sports schedule, when they're at home, when they're in class and they have some downtime, they can read, they can do other activities. How we can think about place differently, again, having access to that device. Learning doesn't just have to take place in the four walls of our school or our classroom. We can really extend the opportunities for learning. Thinking about how we can choose the path differently for kids. Having a digital curriculum means that it's not just print, that we can add multi, multimedia, visuals, and other learning activities, so that students can learn in the, in the best way that's right for them. And then also thinking about the pace. The opportunity to be able to review learning and content is now accessible because our students are in a system where they, they have that access. So I'm going to next call up Angela Bailey Aldrich and Sue Ann Gustafson to talk a little bit about what they are doing in their Grade 5 classroom at Cedar Island Elementary.
Good evening. I'm Sue Ann Gustafson. I teach 5th grade at Cedar Island, and this is my teaching partner, Angela Bailey Aldrich. I really want to thank you for the honor to be able to share our digital, our digital instruction with you this evening. iPads have influenced our instruction in infinite ways. Tonight, we are going to share with you how our art instruction has been influenced by the use of iPads in our 5th grade classrooms at Cedar Island. Before, when we taught art, we would use the teacher-led model. Stand in front of the room, have our examples, our step-by-step instruction, show them what to do, okay, add that to your paper now, here's the next step, someone may need to start over, someone may have an idea how they want to make it unique. When we release them to start working independently, usually resulted in having many questions about differentiation and execution of the art project.
So, let's see here, lots of questions, like you think you're ready to rocket, and 50 hands fly into the air, and you're like, oh no, I'm back at square one. But not with how we've been utilizing iPads. We have been using our iPads to push content to students through School Ag. We have an art in our art course. They have access to video demonstrations showing the step-by-step process that we would like them to use, also the resources that they should use, and they're able to then take those resources and utilize them in the way that best, works best for them. So we have a few photos. Oops, we did. Let's see, there they go. Just the mouse. Okay. Great. Okay. So students are able to watch the instructional video and practice in a way that works best for them, whether it's on a whiteboard or a piece of paper. They can go back and look at it over and over again if they want to. And so really, this differentiation, because we're using content on our iPads, has occurred really naturally, and it's been really student-driven, which is exciting. It allows students to self-pace and to decide how they want to use the given resources, how they would work best for them, and to meet the standards. So what we've noticed is instead of spending time answering a lot of questions about procedures, we're able to spend time encouraging kids creativity, interacting with them one-on-one, and asking them reflective questions. It's a much different conversation in our classroom because we have iPad instruction going on. And so, here's some examples, some pretty creative 5th graders. I think that's it. Is that all? Thanks. Does anyone have any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah. Director Gerhardt.
I just want to thank you for bringing this information. Thank you, Amy, Angela, and Sue Ann. I just, I, I pick out little things for myself, and it's like opportunities in the future, and I like the idea of not having to spend so much money on textbooks as well. And, of course, with a textbook, the moment you print it, it's already begun to get stale, and so this can be kept up to date and fine-tuned as you work, so thank you.
Thank you. I again want to thank the teachers, Amy and Angela and Sue Ann for coming, and again, if you have any other questions for me as well, otherwise, thank you for having us come tonight.
Thank you. Board members, any questions? Comments? Thank you very much. Our next agenda item is the consent agenda. Board members, are there any item or items that you'd like to remove for separate consideration? Hearing none, I would move to accept the consent agenda as printed. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Gertz. Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda is approved as printed. Our next agenda item is action items, and we have a recommendation for approval, agreement on the terms and conditions of employment between Independent School District 279 School Board and management personnel I through M, dated July 1 of 2015 to June 30 of 2017. Judy McDonald.
Good evening, Chair Henke, school board members, and Superintendent McGuire. On the agenda this evening for school board actions are two employee group contracts, and if it's okay with you, Chair Henke, I'll introduce both at this time. And you'll be giving consideration for approval of management personnel I through M and the teachers. School board members have had the opportunity to review the proposed changes to the provisions contained in both contracts, to ask questions, dialogue about the new provisions, and to consider financial implications. The final step now is for school board members to give consideration for formal approval. Our I through M management personnel group consists of 54 employees who serve in a variety of management positions throughout our system. Their operational leadership supports our system and movement toward our mission. This contract expired on June 30, 2015, and the new contract will be in effect beginning, excuse me, 2015, and the new contract will be in effect beginning July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2017. The agreement contains some language changes to reflect current district practices. In addition, changes have been made to the group insurance provisions and the compensation and the sick leave provisions of the collective bargaining agreement. In the compensation section, the most significant change is enhancement in the base salary. The salary range and base compensation per employee will be enhanced by 2% effective July 1, 2016, and 2% effective July 1, 2017. The salary investment outlined above is consistent with the financial parameters established by the school board for the 2015-17 contract negotiations. The two-year agreement results in a 13.46% total package increase. The total financial investment is $705,532 over the term of the agreement. Moving on to licensed staff, our teacher group consists of 1,640 dedicated employees, comprised of educators working inside and outside of the classroom to provide the highest quality educational services and support to our students as they learn and grow in our system. This contract expired on June 30, 2015, and the new contract will be in effect beginning July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2017. The agreement contains some language changes that reflect current district practices, and in addition, changes have been made to the number of, to a number of sections of the collective bargaining agreement. Some of the changes include, but aren't limited to, in the compensation section of the agreement, the salary schedules and rates of pay will be enhanced by 3% for the 2015-16 school year and 1.5% for 2016-17. Teachers will receive step and lane movement both years. The district contribution toward health insurance premium has been increased by 1.27% in year 1 and 2.16% in year 2. A memorandum of understanding was created that allows human resources flexibility in the transfer process to maintain probationary teacher positions in certain circumstances, and a memorandum of understanding was created that allows teachers' flexibility in their work locations for mark reporting days. So the salary investment outlined above is consistent with the financial parameters established by the school board for the 15-17 contract negotiations. The two-year agreement results in a 6.28% total package increase. The total financial investment is $11,489,420 over the term of the agreement, and it's the superintendent's recommendation that you approve the terms and conditions of employment for both of these groups.
Thank you, Judy. Board members, do you have any questions? Neither one? Hearing none. So the first item is the recommendation for approval between the school district and management I through M. Do we have a motion? So moved. Motion by Director Gerhardt. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. So with that, are there any questions or comments for board members? Hearing none. I'll just add my comments for this contract are, while we did make some improvement on some of the pieces, it still doesn't meet the criteria that I have for approving contracts, so I will be withholding my support for this contract. Are there any other questions or comments by board members? Hearing none. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, the motion carries 4 to 1. Our next agenda item is item B. It's the recommendation for approval agreement, agreement of the terms and conditions between Independent School District 279 School Board and the teachers. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Director Edom. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Gertz. Any questions or comments, board members? I have the same comments for this contract. It doesn't meet all of the criteria that I have for approving contracts, so I'll be withholding my support. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, the motion carries on a 4 to 1. And the last item for action items is the recommendation for approval, the alternative teacher professional pay system to be implemented effective with the 2016-2017 school year. Judy McDonald.
Thank you, Chair Henke. This year marks the completion of our ninth year of implementation of the alternative teacher professional pay system. The pay system is a compensation-based system that's based on teacher performance as measured by the ASIO Teacher Development and Evaluation System. The ATPPS system was originally implemented beginning with the 2007-2008 school year and was developed in response to action taken by the Minnesota Legislature in 2005 that resulted in the development of a program titled Q Comp Teacher Compensation. The program provides additional funding, approximately $5.9 million a year, to support the system. These dollars is, are only available through Q Comp and provide funding for salaries of coaches, a facilitator, and all of the teacher performance-based stipends. The performance pay and alternative salary schedule components of the ATPPS system were designed to ensure that teachers meet basic standards prior to receiving any salary enhancement on the salary schedule or stipend award. Once basic standards are met, the teacher has the opportunity to earn additional salary stipends up to a maximum of $2,250 per year for demonstrated achievement in professional growth, student learning goals, and building site goals. Next year, the distribution of the stipend has been adjusted to provide more emphasis on achievement of student learning goals, and it's the superintendent's recommendation that you approve continuation of the Independent School District 279 Alternative Teacher Professional Pay System.
Thank you, Judy. Board members, any questions?
Chair Henke.
Oh, yep, Director Gertz.
Do you, Paul, do you want to do discussion after? I just have a comment, but I can...
Oh, we'll do that. We'll get to that.
Okay.
Any, any questions for Judy? Hearing none. So with that, I will move the recommendation for approval, alternative teacher professional pay system, effective the 2016-2017 school year. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Gertz. Now, board members, any, any questions or comments? Director Gertz.
Chair Henke. I just want to say that being a part of, I just was at one meeting for this, I subbed for dean for this particular meeting for the ATPPS committee, but also being on the committee for the teacher negotiations, I have really enjoyed it. I have the people that we work with. I, I think what Marshall said, I appreciate everything that Marshall said today, and I feel the exact same way. We all come to the table, we don't all get exactly what we want, but we come to share and negotiate and come up, problem solve to come up with a resolution. So I just wanted to say that I was really, I'm really grateful to be on those committees, and I really enjoyed them, and I really enjoy the people who I've been on the committees with.
And I'll just add that for the, the new ATPPS plan going forward, there'll be 35% is based upon... upon the student learning goal, 10% on the school's site goal, and 55% on the professional growth plan. Any other comments, board members? Hearing none. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries for the approval of the ATPPS for 2016-2017 school year. And our next agenda item is, we have some policies for a second reading. We have revised policy 203, operation of school board bylaws. Margaret Weston.
Thank you, Chair Henke, members of the School Board, Superintendent McGuire. There are five policies listed as action items in this evening's agenda. Four of the policies have proposed amendments, and there is one new policy proposed. First readings for the policies are at either the November 17 or December 8 school board meetings, so more than four weeks have passed since the first reading of each of these. I received no comments on the proposed amendments or the new policy and have made no changes since the first reading. The policy 203, operation of school board bylaws, the proposed amendments to policy 203 reflects solely deleted citations for statutes in the body of the policy and list them at the end of the policy. This recommendation for the change is made to conform to the policy committee's direction to have a consistent format for our policies.
Thank you. Do you want to, you want to just, how about if you do the overview, and then if there's any questions, we'll have board members ask questions on that specific one, and then if there's no questions, we'll just go to the next one. And then we'll do all of our stuff at the end.
Okay.
Any questions on 203? Hearing none. Thanks.
Okay. Policy 925 is now called the Internet World Wide Web and Intranet Publishing, no, it's now the Web and Intranet Publishing, changed from the Internet World Wide Web and Internet Publishing. So the proposed amendments bring the policy more up-to-date in the terminology used, and as noted, the policy name has changed. There are also proposed changes for consistency with the standards adopted for policies by the Board Policy Committee. Administrative procedures have been included for fuller understanding of this policy. In particular, the procedures now contain more direction on the use of copyrighted materials, which is in response to many queries from staff about use of copyrighted materials.
Thank you. Board members, any questions on policy 925? We have none.
All right. Policy 543, the use of restrictive procedures as behavioral interventions for children with disabilities receiving special education services. The revisions reflect corrections, formatting, and additional legislative references. No substantive changes were made to the policy.
Thank you. Board members, any questions on 543? We do have, oop, go ahead.
Did we skip over 519?
Yeah, item F. That's okay.
Oh, sorry. I've got them in a different order, sorry.
So we have no questions on 543, so we'll do 519.
519, thank you. Interviews of students by outside agencies. Again, there are no substantive changes, and the policy closely tracks Minnesota law governing access to students at school during the instructional day. The revisions remove procedures from the policy and more clearly spell out the duties of school district employees.
Thank you. Any questions on 519? We have none. And the last one is policy 706.
Policy 706 is the new policy. It's investments, other post-employment benefits, or OPEB. There is a current policy 705 on investments, which contains restrictions on investment of school district funds that are not legally required for the investment of OPEB trust funds. So the new policy provides more flexibility, still consistent with law governing those funds, but more flexibility than is allowed in the current policy 705. The policy and procedures include requirements for maintaining appropriate oversight by the School Board.
Thank you. Board members, any questions on policy 706?
Just one comment.
Yep, Director Brigitte.
It's hard to tell from the title how exciting this is. I can tell. The feeling in the room is electric on this topic. I'd just mention, I personally am very excited about this change. This is going to save us millions over in the future. Just saying. Thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. Thank you, Margaret. So with that, I will move to approve the second reading of revised policy 203, operation of the school board bylaws. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Gerhart. Any comments, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries on the revision of policy 203. Our next one is, I will move to approve the second reading of revised policy 925, Web and Intranet Publishing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Edom. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries on the second reading of revised policy 203. Next item, I will move to approve the second reading of revised policy 519, interview of students by outside agencies. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Edom. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries on the second reading of revised policy 519. Our next item, I will move to approve the second reading of revised policy 543, use of restrictive procedures as behavioral interventions for children with disabilities receiving special education services. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Gerhart. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries on the second reading, revised policy 543. Our next item, I will move to approve the second reading and adoption of the new policy 706, investments, other post-employment benefits, OPEB trust. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Director Brigitte. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries on the new policy 706. And our next agenda item is gifts to the district. I will move to graciously accept gifts to the district totaling $26,973.34. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Ooh. Seconded by Director Brigitte. Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to approve gifts to the district. And our next agenda item is announcements. Director Gerhart.
Negotiations strategy meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 19, 2016, at 7:00 PM in Room N10 at the Educational Service Center. This meeting will be closed to the public. A policy committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 26, at 6:00 PM in Room W42 at the ESC. This meeting will be open to the public. A school board work session will be held on Tuesday, February 2, 2016, at 6:00 PM in the Forum Room at the ESC. The topic will be fiscal year 2017 budget. This meeting will be open to the public. And a regular school board meeting will be held on Tuesday, February 16, 2016, at 6:00 PM in the Boardroom at the ESC. This meeting will be open to the public.
Thank you. And our last agenda item is adjournment. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Gerhart. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned at 7:03 PM. Thank you, everybody.